Well, we'll call this meeting to order. Our first item on the business is to, on the agenda is to go into a closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where; No previous announcements have been made of the business or industry interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community as Project 2014-010. Other items is discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that item is Old Blacksburg Middle School property. Do have a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second, would the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Creighton?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Vick?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye. We're in closed meeting. First thing I'm gonna do is, we're about five minutes late coming out, I'm gonna apologize to you all, usually start at 7:15, and it ran over a little bit, and it's according to the clock at 7:20. And another thing, Supervisor Matt Gabriel is not with us tonight, he got ill this afternoon and didn't, is not gonna make it. Need a motion to go out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, would the clerk please call roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Vick?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six eyes.
Okay. Certification of closed meeting whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative record vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, in which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion conveying the school, the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, would the clerk please call roll?
Ms. Vick?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six eyes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is our invocation, and then after we observe a moment of silence as we reflect on the business at hand, we will be led into pledge by our county administrator, Mr. Matters.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Next item is delegations, and we do have a delegation this evening, and it is the New River Highlands Resource Conservation and Development Council, and I think we have Mr. Gary Bowen here, and his backup is Mr. Chuck Shorter.
Thank you, Chair.
Welcome.
Board members, I wanna go through a little presentation, I know y'all have a copy of our annual report and our plan of work, a lot of what you're gonna see is in those two documents because they really cover what we do and what we're about, but I'm gonna add a little bit more to it and try to make it a little more pertinent to look under camera. See if I can figure out how to get this stuff going here.
Just listen to your backup right there, he'll be able to tell you.
When I get stowed, I'm gonna ask him to do it. See, I've already skipped a couple slides. The New River Highlands RCND Council serves 11 counties and the city of Galax, and are starting in the east from Montgomery County, Flowey Giles, all the way to Worcester County, Tazza County, so that's the makeup of the area, that's where we try to focus on. So if you'll notice, we spend a lot of effort, we don't do a project necessarily in each county every year, we do several projects, we hope that are project-wide, cover the whole area, or impact the whole area, to make things going, but that is our matters, we serve six long-range conservation districts, and three PDCs plus one county.
Figuring out how to make it good.
Ah, I can't. These are our goals, Council built a long-range plan, basically over five years, and we will be updating the long-range plan there in 2014, but this is the goals, these are the things we try to work on, increase awareness of land management issues impacting the RCND area, improve water quality, increase awareness and understanding of elective officials and landowners' issues impacting land conservation, conservation easements, and then promote community development. And these are, when projects brought to us and talked about, these are the kind of questions we ask, do they fall within those? Our vision is for prosperous, modern rural community living in harmony with the environment, and our mission is promote the management of our natural resources within their capability, that's probably one of the key things, it's within their capabilities for the enhancement of the quality of life and environment for the area. So that's what kinda guides us in what we do, and why we look at projects and think about them. This is just a list of projects that are, we're currently working on, or have recently completed, this was starting in July last year, we'll go through this July, or this June, so that you can get a good feel of the different type, variety of projects that we may be involved with, or are working on. Some of these projects are going on in Montgomery County, a few of them will not be, but... One of the projects we've been involved with for the last six, seven years has been protecting woodland homes from wildfire. We have a grant from Virginia Department of Forestry to do fuel reductions in woodland communities, and trying to make our woodland homes safer. More is an educational effort, we know we can't get all the woodland homes and do the work, but if we can get enough started in enough places, it'll catch on, and people will learn that, hey, you know, I can live in the woodlands, have my privacy, there are certain things I can do to reduce my risk of wildfire, and if I get a fire, that means less pressure on your fire apartments, your rescue squads, and less potential for damage to that house. It means that you can't, they should be able to be protected with very minimal amount of additional work. If you got forest going right up to the house and that, then you're under risk of having to have a lot of fire apartments on standby if you get a fire down slope front particularly, or downwind, because if it gets started, it's, it can be bad even here in the mountains. We don't think about this mineral issue until you get to looking at statistics, and there's more structures burned east of the Mississippi than there is west of the Mississippi each year in wildfires. And we hear about ones out west, but because they're moving about a lot of houses, the whole community at one time, but it's, in the east, it's only one or two structures in the fire, so, and there's just more structures running. So it is a real issue, but you can see here, what we do is, is try to go in and take out, create a good 30-foot buffer around the property, around the structure, reduce the fuel load even beyond that 30-foot, on out to about 150 feet, or we just gradually step down and call it, how much we're taking.
Question, Gary, now, do you all seek these homes out, or do you let the homeowner seek you out for advice? I mean, how do you come up, at this home you have here, the before and the after, do somebody bring it to the?
They was either, they either came to us, or they were approached by somebody in Department of Forestry.
Oh, okay.
And, and then, you know, we try to promote the program, let people know it's available, but we don't always reach out there where we need to be, but working in conjunction with Department of Forestry, that's another group of people out there that work it. And we do at times, do some drive-throughs, identify potential sites, and try to contact those landowners, doing it, but we rely an awful lot on word of mouth. Once we get into a community, what we normally find, if we can do one, one structure in a community, most times their neighbors will take a look at it, say, this nosed bed, and contact us, and we can get more, more homes protected that way.
Okay.
I think right now we have four or five homes on the waiting list here in Montgomery County that will be done this spring, sometime, when the weather breaks for the trees, can get out and do the work. Another project that we're in the final six, eight months of, is our New River Grazing Management Project. This was a project that we partnered with NRCS, the National Resource Conservation Service. We received a $1 million grant to do controlled grazing, manage demonstrations throughout the area. We had 70-something people apply, we could only fund 25 of the projects, so, this is, we're scared out, most of them are further southwest of us, but we do have some, and Chuck has been participating in our demonstration, field days, or farm visit days, and is conducting a program on his farm, so, not as one of our participants here, but what has from prior work he's done, he's doing. But this is a, one of our win-win conservation practices, we like to really promote and encourage landowners to do, because one of the few conservation practices that will give you an immediate return on your money invested. You can improve your income off your farm, you can improve your production off the farm by going to a rotational grazing system, where you're moving the cattle once a week, or every three days, or some people once a day. So, we try to have a grazing school each quarter, we're kinda missing one this winter, we've gotta get one going here very soon, but we'd normally have about 15 to 20 participants at each grazing school, and we hold those at least in two locations in the, in the area each time that we do it, so, we, to reduce the travel time for the landowners that are wanting to come. This has been a really successful project, change is slow, and it's, it's hard to get people on board and doing it, managing it right, but if, the more of it we get done, the more they, it shows up, and they promote it and talk about it and encourage it, so, it is a really good program, does a lot to improve water quality, because if you got a good sod, you reduce the runoff from land, which means you have less nutrients, less sediment, and less bacteria enter the streams where you're following and getting grazing We're in a, we have a streambank restoration, or streambank stabilization project, that we're just, again, we'll be finishing this project up this spring. We have a site that I thought would be under construction, tree some use on the following branch, boy, there's just been too cold, or too wet, or a combination of the two, to get in and get started work, but we hope, contractor, talk to them today, they hope to start by the end of next week, and get this project going. As you can see, we have a problem, streambank eroding real bad, threatening property, what we try to do is find the right fix, right practices that will, will make it stabilize it, make it work. Some sites you can get by with just doing vegetative treatment, and upper left-hand corner, you're looking at a, what we call a live stake planting, where we just plant live stakes, basically cut little limbs, stick them in the ground, and hopefully they'll take off and grow, if they do, they will help the bank stop erosion to get, sometimes you gotta go rock. The upper right-hand corner is showing a, what we call a string bar, which is a deflector that juts out into the stream, water crosses it, it causes the water to turn away from that bank and more to center of the channel, very effective for controlling bank erosion, and a little less expensive to try and armor the whole bank in all places. Just to give you another shot of some of the primary areas we're working at, at Steve Vaughn's side in Carroll County, that fence, first time I looked at this project, there was two posts out. When I took this picture, I think there's nine out. If you go back and look at it now, there's 30 out, after the, this storm last spring. And then a little project in Floyd County, you can see where we armored the bank, protected it. Three years ago now?
At least, maybe four.
Twenty-four. We started a project on Tom's Creek on Chuck's property, this is a series, this is another string bar, this is a real good picture of the string bar and stabilization we did there, we treated a lot of the stream on Chuck's property. This is just more shots, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, and look past that tree up through there, you can see the bank eroding, and we've already treated the section below the tree. Bottom picture there is the same site, but looking downstream, above the tree where we, we treated it there. Again, we shaped the bank, put in some log, and covered the stream rubble, a deflector, and planted live stakes and seeded it. The other side, top side, is a cedar tree revetment, which is just taking cedar trees, tie them in the bank, using the cedar trees to break up the velocity, put live stakes in it, and hoping that by the time cedar trees deteriorate, we'll have vegetative stuff on the bank that will help willows and those type of things.
That lower right, when you see that bank where it's cut, it used to be almost over where the green part is on the left side of the tree, erosion has eaten probably about three-quarters of an acre out there. We did 900 feet on the lower end, and then 900 feet upstream, using, I don't know, four or five different practices, and then we've been able to use that as a demonstration site for classes, they had people in here from several states, one time, looking at it and designing, but all that's, that's in there. And it's, it's holding up well, it's been...
It's very successful.
The bank, plus the fence over the bank, it's all been underwater since we did that.
Several times, not just once, but three or four times since we did it, and typically still all flowed the way out last spring, too, without any problems.
Yeah.
Still there, still working, and this is what we wanna see, just trying to find ways to do it, and find resources to do it with, to help the landowners do it. It's very expensive to treat the stream banks, registrations. And with Black County, we have a project we call Growing Healthy Kids, Kids Growing in the Garden Project. This involves working with students throughout the year, I think these are third through fifth grade students, at three of the schools, rural retreats, pillar, and, I'm drawing a blank on the other. There's 771 students that participate in the project, it's all about learning to eat healthy and be healthy, doing that, and we also had a library program where we provided funding for some resource materials in the library, where 27 parents participated in different programs, I don't know how many people checked out books, but a bunch, but the resources are still there. But it's just one of our efforts, try to educate people more about how to live good and do this. This project's funded through the Lithland Foundation, and that's the reason we're only doing those two schools. This year we're gonna have a garden camp, we started out to be a summer garden camp, where we've worked with the students one day a week through the summer, but we've changed it and modified it, where we're gonna actually start it in April, and start the gardens in April, but as a pilot project, we'll have, I think, 15 students participating, where they'll go out and grow a vegetable plot of their own, that they'll grow and manage, working with the master gardeners and the program people. So they'll actually have a chance to plant their garden, work it, harvest it, and go through the spring crop, summer crop, and then the fall crop, and we're thinking this is gonna be really beneficial, get a lot more interest in growing your own vegetables and eating properly at the same time. Again, and we're working with farmers market in Lithville, in 2012, they had averaged 402 sales per week with a value of $2,500, they had 17 educational events at the market, you can see them, kind of listed there, so, and 191 participants in those 17 events, educational events. We've been working for, for two and a half years on renewal energy in Twin County, Carroll Grayson Counties, we're just finishing up a, installing a pellet burner in Matthew State Forest to replace the forest air heat system, this is by heat for the workshop, and for their building, for their office complex and meeting rooms. It's got to pay back, I think, about 20 years to give a return, positive return to, but it's a way to demonstrate and do this, we've also evaluated probably 15 sites, doing a quick engineering review of the sites, and see if they have the potential to convert from, from their present system to a wood pellet or, or wood chip system. We've identified two schools in Carroll County that could pay back on the system to do conversion in three years. So, they're currently heating with oil burns, and there's a system that will convert those oil burners to a wood pellet burner, and go from there. So, if you can pay back a system, I think the savings on this, this system's about 30,000, 40,000 a year, so, it's about $100,000 conversion to this, so. So, we think there's plenty of potential for that throughout the region, this will be locally grown jobs, not imported fuel, but locally produced fuel, and, which means local jobs, instead of spending money on oil, coal, those type things. So I'm sure you're interested in doing it, and we will have this system up and running so people can visit it, learn more about it. Last fall, we had an opportunity to do a wild and safe sound code smart workshop, which we just, was a meeting, we had about 25 community members from throughout southwest Virginia that came to participate, and that's just trying to encourage people and communities to look at what they could do with the building codes to improve and reduce risk of wildfire, and there's, there's a lot that can be done in there. It's kind of a touchy topic, because you're talking about code enforcement, but it, more we brought on to let people know there is potential, that localities have the potential to tweak their building codes, and, and in fact reduce their wildfire risk for woodland We're also very proud that last year we received the Outstanding RCND Council of Virginia Award, or the Outstanding Council Member, Bill Snapp, the St. Louis Service Award at state level, Danny Gobier, for his work on the grazing program, and Chuck was inducted into Virginia Association Hall of Fame, so, I'll call that to y'all's attention. And that concludes my formal presentation, I'd just like to answer any questions y'all may have. I hope I answered some of the things that we do, it's hard to say what we do, because we're pretty open, if you look at natural resource use and management, it's a pretty broad field, and go a long way, and leaves it open.
The wildfire reduction thing, we've been Indian Hills, Laurel Ridge, and...
Preston Forest. Preston Forest. And Echo Hills.
We've done a good fit of that.
Questions, comments, board members?
Well, I'm not brand new, but I was glad that y'all came and made the presentation to help give me a better idea of what y'all do, and I wanna thank you very much for coming out tonight and letting us, a newcomer, know what, what you do on a regular basis, thank you.
I got in this thing in 2000, old rep, I think I got a life sentence.
You're doing well.
We just hope you live long.
Right.
Any other?
Yes, you do. So, I guess the question is, like, if we appoint someone to come to the meetings, like, what is it, how often do you meet, and what is it that you do at the meetings, so do you basically discuss these programs, or what do you do at the meetings?
At the meetings, we meet every other month, or, and our executive council meets all our months, so, we actually have a meeting each month, but our full board meets every other month. They talk about these projects, they talk about what to bring forward, and then just the governance of the board, of the council.
Ideas, looking for things to do, ideas, what needs done, what somebody thinks up something, sometimes we can figure out a way to do it, and you gotta figure out how to pay for it.
And the board sets priorities, they adopt the projects that we do, that we undertake, and sets priorities for those projects, as for, just in what order we try to accomplish them. And when I say that, we do a lot of this, but we also take advantage of funding opportunities quite often, so that, you know, sometimes projects don't move as fast, that are higher priority, but the funding sources aren't there, so they're harder to find funding for, so we'll move other projects in that we can get funding for.
Thank you.
And I, the sponsorship money that we get from you guys pays for our office rent, clerical help and stuff like that, because we can't get that money out of grants, sometimes you can get some, and there's ways of kinda tweaking stuff, but that's primarily for the sponsorship in the county, something like that, and we can't pay for it.
Well, thank you guys for coming and bringing us up to date, and Chuck, we hope you live long, life sentence. You can, you can do another 25 or 30 years.
Thank y'all for being here. We appreciate it.
We appreciate talking to you.
Anytime y'all have questions, we'll roll the half the clock, get your answer.
Thanks, Gary.
One thing we talked about out there, it doesn't have to be a board member. You can appoint or ask somebody other than a board member what to do. Some of the counties have folks that come to the meetings and then go back to the board. We have to know that.
Is that like you, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Like you've been an appointee.
I'm on Skyline Soul Award. But yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See y'all.
Thanks. The next item on our agenda is public addresses. This is where it's an opportunity where anybody that hasn't any comment on government, local government, county government issues and things that they can come forward. And when they come forward, they need to speak into the mic, say the name and address, and address all comments to the board, and you have five minutes. Person signed up is Ms. Barbara Skinner. She's going to speak on budget.
I'm Barbara Skinner, 3583 Laurel Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. Martin and Ruder recently noted that we've not returned to normal growth in the county, even though the recession is supposedly over. For my family, the recession resulted in decreased income. Additionally, gone are short-term disability life insurance, dental and eye care benefits. Our catastrophic healthcare plan to my husband's employer includes a $6,000 deductible, and we pay part of the premium. I think I'm cutting in and out.
Yeah. Push it down, actually push it down.
Push it down, okay.
If you talk over it, it won't do that.
Okay. I'm sure many other families have seen reductions in salaries and benefits. They've had to make adjustments. Our school budgets need to reflect these realities also. Nevertheless, we all understand that maintenance must be a top priority. Unfortunately, the school board continues to ignore the findings of a Cardinal Tech maintenance review, which reveals significant maintenance deficiencies in our school buildings. Last fall, Superintendent Blackburn wrote in an email to me, quote, "The Cardinal Tech recommendations have not yet been funded, nor has a funding source been identified," end quote. While the proposed budget again fails to deal adequately with maintenance, there are requests for increased staffing. Already 88% of the MCPS operating budget goes to personnel, while the national public school average is around 81%. Reducing our staff to the national average would save millions. Currently, only 47% of MCPS employees are in instructional positions. 60 years ago, our public schools employed over twice as many teachers as non-teaching staff. Perhaps we have a bloated administration which could be trimmed. MCPS continues an expensive inclusion model for special education students, although for years we have failed to come close to state proficiency targets. The Thomas V. Fordham Institute conducted a study on spending compared to academic results in special education, and the author, Nathan Levinson, summarized the results by noting, quote, "People think intuitively that more spending must mean better outcomes. This paper shows this is just not true," end quote. It seems likely that MCPS could make improvements to special education which would produce higher academic performance for less spending. The proposed budget includes $1.13 million to provide health care for part-time employees through the Affordable Health Care Act. However, already $1.6 million in bonuses go to part-time employees. The school board has historically provided this extra money to help these employees with health care expenses. Certainly, we should provide both, and it's possible for the board to fund neither for savings of $2.73 million. The board's budget continues the practice of paying 100% of single health care premiums for full-time employees. However, Superintendent Blackburn also included possible budget reduction options with the proposed budget, including the following two possibilities: requiring employees to pay 5% of their health care premium costs and requiring new hires to pay 10%. It makes sense to me to require all employees to contribute at the 10% level. This would result in savings of around $1 million. Two math coaches previously funded on a one-year basis are included in budget staff additions. I understand that six math coaches have been brought on board as a part of MCPS Math Intervention Program. What can we expect for this additional expense of around $382,000? Tom Lovless of the Brookings Institution recently reported that a two-year math intervention program, which included coaching, showed no significant impact on teacher knowledge or student achievement. I have some more examples here. These are grants that they have applied for, for over $200,000. But with three out of four of our high schools lacking full state accreditation due to missing math benchmarks and our special needs students struggling academically year after year, how can we afford to participate in research? Shouldn't we instead focus on what has been demonstrated to actually work? With demonstrated results in mind, I furnished the school board with information about amazing academic improvements produced in the Mooresville, North Carolina School District over the last five or six years. Rising from an average rank within the state, this district has soared to second place academically, while its per pupil spending is 108th out of 115 North Carolina school districts. Comparing operating expenses in 2013, Mooresville paid seven, or spent $7,465 per pupil, while MCPS spent $9,679 per pupil. And I guess that's it. I just urge you, I'll send a copy of my remarks through email. I have a few more examples here, and I just urge you to not increase taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Mr. John B. Gill.
My name is John Gill. I live at 2037 Huffville Road in Pilot. I think we're missing some tax revenue that we should be approaching. The students are our biggest drawdown on our revenue in Montgomery County, the students of Virginia Tech. First of all, we're low on our personal property tax. Now, the personal property tax comes mainly from vehicles, and if they're varaged, and primarily varaged in Montgomery County, then they should be paying a tax on that. And I don't think that most of them are paying any tax at all. They come from, like, Newport News, Virginia, or Northern Virginia, and they go on their holidays, but the vehicle is primarily varaged in here, in Montgomery County, where I think we should be collecting our licensing fee, and we should be collecting the tax on it. And there's, I'm sure that there's several hundred thousand dollars, and that's where I'm figuring that there's probably 20,000 to 30,000 tech vehicles that the tech students have. And I believe we're gaining a lot from this tax. Also, I think we don't get any personal, we don't get any property tax from them. Students don't usually purchase a home, and that's primarily where we, usual place where we get our funding for the schools and our services and emergency services. I'm thinking that students should pay some kind of a room tax for apartment complexes, the one apartment complex. Most of the places there probably have two or three bedrooms, and they're not paying any kind of tax to us at all, other than the property tax that the landowner or the, we should probably have something like a room tax that you charge for a motel. While the students, the students go here, and they want, they want more things, and, you know, we're the ones that have to pay it. And that's just generally the people that live in, they don't live in Blacksburg and Christiansburg. We have a lot of surrounding areas here, and these are not really rich people. Most of us don't get over like about $20,000 is our general income in this area. So I think that we should, if there's additional taxing authority that needs to be gotten here, then I think that we should go on out to the Virginia Assembly and try to get the additional taxing authority. We're not the only county that needs that. There's universities and colleges in several different locations. For example, University of Virginia in Charlottesville. And they, I think they've tried to go ahead and get some taxes. They've got very little response from the university there. But so maybe we have that university, not only, we have Bridgewater, and several other large universities and communities which need to have those students pay some kind of money some way or other. As far as the, I hear, for the budget, you know, I hear a lot about the taxes, about the buses. And each year, we pay, we provided money for the schools to go ahead and provide buses. Well, I think in several different years, they've not used the bus money for that. They just use it wherever they want to, and they used it for giving the teachers a bonus. I, you know, I'm on social security. I haven't gotten any bonus money. And, you know, in fact, several years there, I got left next to nothing. And teachers get paid 37, their starting pay for teachers, $37,000 plus 17,000 or 18,000, which are in bonuses. And I don't, you know, that's a lot of money. The average pay around here is only about $22,000. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak who did not sign up? And if it is, here's your opportunity to get up and address the board, and you have five minutes. Don't have y'all jump at once. Okay, so the public address period is closed. Our next item on the agenda is our addendum. I guess we don't, we don't have one.
One this evening, no sir.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Is it any discussion on any of the items on the agenda, on the consent agenda? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay. Well, I was called Chair Jones the other night when, did you hear that? When he said Chair Jones.
We noticed that.
Yeah. New business. Subject A, Declaration of Local Emergency on February 13, 2004.
2014.
I mean, 2014. I'm 10 years off, you know. But Declaration of Local Emergency on February 13, due to the heavy snow greater than 15 inches and multiple road closures.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is just a formality. The, in order to expedite things, I have the authority as Director of Emergency Services to declare a local emergency, but it has to be validated by the, by the board at the first available meeting. And again, the reason we did that was at the time, we didn't know if we were going to need to call in-state resources to help us. But we were very fortunate. It was a tremendous amount of snow, but we were very fortunate that we had very few problems during that event, including virtually no power outages, which was quite a blessing.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject B, Resolution of Recognition for Blacksburg Police Chief Kimberly S. Cranus.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Well deserved.
Okay. The clerk please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item, Subject C, Recognition, Resolution of Recognition for Virginia Tech Police Chief Wendell Flincham.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Biz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The next item on our agenda is a going to work session. Be it resolved, the board supervises hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following to Western Virginia Regional Jail. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. The clerk please call the roll.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biz?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
We're now in work session.
Chair Brown, Deputy Administrator Edwards is going to, Edmonds is going to talk to us a little bit about an issue that you're going to be hearing more about as we go into the budget process, and that's cost related to Western Virginia Regional Jail. Carol had mentioned this to me a week or so ago, that it was something that she felt we needed to cover. And then I don't know if you saw, but there was actually a news story on Channel 10 last week from Franklin County about the very same issue. So this is an issue for Franklin County, and it's certainly going to be an issue for us. So Carol, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. What I'm going to talk about is largely around the number of inmates that we're now housing in the Western Virginia Regional Jail, and what impact that has on our current year budget as well as next year. And what I'll say to you as the messenger is, I can tell you what it is. I just can't tell you why it's happening. So with that said, the inmate population for Montgomery County has increased 88% from an average of 138 five years ago to what we're currently estimating as an average of 260 in county. One question that always comes up is, is it an effect of the cost of the regional jail going up? No. The per diem rate of the regional jail has remained the same since fiscal year 12. That has not increased, and it's not increased next year. What has increased for us is that Montgomery County now houses the highest number of inmates of all the other jurisdictions. This was a snapshot as of February the 10th. As you can see, we're Roanoke County used to be the leader among all the other jurisdictions of housing the most inmates. It's now us, followed by Franklin County. And just a note here, there are 713 inmates housed that day, but they also have about 100, 110 more from federal and state prisoners as well. This is just a chart of that same day where we can clearly see that we're stepping out in front and going for the lead here at 269 among the owner jurisdictions. Just to look back at where we were again in fiscal year 10, we were at 138. And then we had the increase in fiscal year 11, which, you know, you wouldn't expect there to be some increase in the number of inmates during that time. This went up 26%, and then sort of evened off, if you can look at the chart, all the way up through last fiscal year. So when we were preparing the budget, we thought we were pretty good at the numbers we were looking at in order to set the budget for the current year. Then look what happened. We closed the budget up, if you'll look at April 13 there, and the months, and this is a monthly chart, the average daily population for the months and the months prior. We were hanging very close around a 185, which is what we were projecting. So we closed the budget with the funding sufficient to cover that number of inmates. And then there was May 2013, where it accelerated a 14% increase in one month. That was 27 more inmates, and the cost of 27 inmates in one month is close to $27,000. So with those kinds of numbers, when they accelerate, you've got an annual cost that is substantial. If you look at where it goes through, starting So with those kinds of numbers, when they accelerate, you've got an annual cost that is substantial. If you look at where it goes through, starting again in September, and ongoing increases throughout the year, in December, our average was 271. It came down to 260. So when you average it all out through the year, we're estimating an average, although it goes up and down, of about 260 inmates. The next question that usually comes up is, okay, well, does that mean you have less inmates in your local jail? And the answer to that is no. The inmates in the local jail, as you can see from this chart, have stayed fairly stable, hanging right around 90. Again, there was fiscal year 13, we're under 200, and now in '14, we're looking at 260. So what does all this mean? It means we have to pay more money. In the current year, we're estimating that shortfall to be about $800,000. The current budget was 2.2. Again, it was based on an ADM that held tight right up through April of about 185, and then May started, and it went off the charts. To date, we've paid 1.9 million. We have a balance in the budget of around 265,000, and we're projecting out through June 30th to be a little over a million dollars, if it stays where it currently is without another dramatic increase. So we wanted to give you some background and some information ahead of time because you're going to be seeing a resolution to do an additional appropriation to pay the cost of the Western Virginia Regional Jail of about $800,000 in the current year. So what does this mean for next year? Well, obviously, if it's 800 in this year, it's gonna be $800,000 for next year. I think some initial estimates that we were looking at, or have been reported to on before, were about 700,000, and that's not, based on what we're trending right now, gonna be enough. So we're looking at 800,000 along with the way debt service works at the regional jail, and based on the service agreements that are signed by all the jurisdictions, you pay your share, or the share of what debt service cost is divided up among the localities on the basis of actuals that are what's called a true-up at year-end. And what that means is, you look at the actual numbers that you had in the jail for fiscal year 13, and you will be paying that percentage of the debt service for fiscal year 15. So it's a behind, look back in order to pay debt service. For the payment of actual inmates in the regional jail, you're paying how many you put in there every day, how many you put in there. So with debt service, our numbers, based on what everybody else was doing on actuals in 13, weren't as bad as some other people. So what we pay in the current year, in fiscal year 15, what we're gonna be paying is a little bit less for debt service by about 200,000. We will, however, based on the numbers that we're trending in paying right now, have that cost pick up to be more of a share in fiscal year 13. So for next year's budget, we will use the $200,000 that is already in the budget base for debt service, we'll move that over to pay the per diem payments, and we'll add $800,000 to it. That means the per diem costs are gonna be about 3.2 million for an estimated right now that will fund 273 average daily population. It's an increase over fiscal year 13 actuals by 46%. That brings the total budget for both per diem and debt service to 4.3 million dollars next year. And with that said, that ends the information I have to bring to you tonight. And as I said, I'm the messenger. I can tell you what it is. I just can't tell you why it's happening.
Okay, Mr. Tuck.
I just have a couple of questions. Do you know if Franklin County, when they became a member, did they close down their local jail?
No, I think they haven't.
Now, is Salem, is Salem part of the Roanoke County Jail?
They are.
They are.
I'm looking at the heads.
I forget. The access to all the jails are way back here in the back.
I understand. I'm just trying to look at our population and try to get an understanding of it, because we've got 100 people in our jails, and then we're still a lot more than Roanoke County, which basically has our same population. Now, they have a big jail, but...
Okay, Ms. Creed.
About two or three things. When this thing was first, when we were first talking about having a jail and all the meetings we had, we decided how much, what percentage, everybody didn't pay the same thing. Might pay the same amount for what they wanted, but we took a lesser percentage than some of the others in that jail. And my question, I guess, is when these other jurisdictions, out of these, whether it be Roanoke, Franklin, or Salem, when they, if they were to get more prisoners, they would get, you know, whoever has got their spots secured are the ones who are gonna get the next slots, or are gonna get their people before we get any. We can only get them, in my understanding, after there's a vacancy, that neither one of the people there have, neither one, I said people, and neither one of the jurisdictions there, that they need space.
Well, I guess, we've not gotten to a point where capacity's an issue. There's been capacity there available. And so the way the percentage works is, we initially probably thought we were gonna need about 25% or something of the total. But the percentage, if you remember the discussion about how do you pay operations, it's put and pay. You're only gonna pay for how many you put there. Then the second piece was the debt service, and that's what changes every year based on how many from the prior year. So your percentage actually changes.
I understand, but that was, my question is, what do we do? Order our people going, how much does it cost if they have to go out of there to another facility? Does it stay the same? Does it cost more?
Well, I'm not sure I know the answer, other than I'm sure it would cost whatever their per diem rate is. But again, fortunately, we've not had the issue of capacity in total. We, there's been enough capacity at the regional jail to handle all the jurisdictions at this point, and even have some other beds to sell, basically, for federal prisoners.
Right. And when we were failing that, there was also talk that we could double bunk a lot of those and get more people into the jails.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna have to look back here to the jail expert on some of those discussions, because these guys know a lot more about that than I do.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the board sent you. This has given me a heads up on this, and Chief Depp has run quite a few numbers. And to answer directly to your question, Mr. Creed, the facility was originally built for 600 single-bed and dormitory-bed inmates. And we got the approval DOC to double bunk an additional 200, which gave us the capacity of the Western Virginia Regional Jail, just over 210, I'm sorry, 810 inmates. We still have the latitude to go back and ask DOC to double bunk the balance of the beds, the, whatever you call them, hooks or whatever you call it, if you go into the wall, and the beds and mattresses and everything are in stock. So if we need to go up to somewhere around 12, 1500 inmates down there, we can do that, to have the room to do that. Locally in our jail, we're staffed for one deputy for every five inmates. We have no emergency correctional positions, and that's why our numbers are down. And we have to send everyone out to Western Virginia Regional Jail. Now, the reason I think a lot of our numbers are up, is you have to keep in mind, we built a brand new courthouse. And for years and years and years, I think Mr. Tuck can attest to this, there has been a backlog in the court system to get cases heard, tried, and sentences passed down. Well, I think Chief Hall will address some of that in his little presentation, but don't worry, in his larger presentation. But the big deal is that we're having far more court days per se. In other words, eight hours in court can run up to, we're running three circuit courts, three general district courts, and three juvenile courts. That is three separate court days in each of the courts. That's the way you count them for your work study and reporting. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Chief Depp and let him run through a few of these figures with you. And also, our civil process ended down, where people have been summoned to appear to testify in a case, and when they get to court, the case is postponed because one person wasn't there, the attorney wasn't available. Now, courtrooms are much more open, the cases are being heard faster, and therefore, the judges are passing down the sentences, and they have capacity that either we hold them in our jail, or we transfer our older population down to Western Regional. And that's what's driving the college by.
Just like circuit court days compared between 2012 and 2013, we had 48 more days of circuit court in 2013 than we did in 2012. J and D Court, same period of time, we had 21 more court days from 2012 to 2013. He talked about witness subpoenas. We served 3,000 less witness subpoenas last year, showing that less cases was continued because we've got more courtrooms. Judges. We added judges between 2012 and 2013, allowing us to have more court. We currently have three circuit court judges, two juvenile domestic relation judges, and also three district court judges, that are all working together, trying cases. Our street crime unit, we are more proactive in the drug problem in Montgomery County. As all of you have seen, methamphetamine and drugs in Montgomery County. With the 92,000 population, it comes also. We've had over 100 meth labs that our office has worked. Each one of them, we have made numbers and numbers of charges. A lot of these charges with conspirators and manufacturing, and manufacturing requires mandatory minimum sentence. That means if they convicted, they've got to serve, say, for example, three years. We've had people get as much as 25 years from a meth lab. This year alone, either us or helping another local jurisdiction around us, we are averaging almost one meth lab a week in 2014. We became proactive the last couple of years with pawn shops and recycling centers. We've went and actually went to all of them and told them what the law was and what we required. The scrap metal permits, collecting the information, report us, report it to us, what people are selling to them, and they have to have a photo ID. Same thing with pawn shops. It's making the people more reluctant to steal, harder to get rid of the stuff. On a good note, last year, I think, as a combination of all these things, our larcenies was down 12.7% in Montgomery County. Assaults, 9.5. BNEs was down 33.9%. Sexual offenses was down 22.7%. Kidnapping and deductions, or attempted kidnapping or kidnapping inductions, was down 62.5%. So I don't think there's no correct answer to any of it, direct answer to any of it, but I think it's a combination of a lot of different things adding up to all these numbers.
You know, I'll probably be Donald West, just darn good long for him.
There's been a couple more questions, but the $4.3 million that it's costing right now, does that include the inmates in Christianburg, or is it just that 4.3 down there?
It's all the regional jail.
Just all inquiries down there, is that just down there?
The 4.3 is just down there. So we, and that's the reason I asked the question, because now, she said 4.3 millions are costing, so it's gonna be more than that.
Western Regional Jail, I'm sorry.
And then how much is the cost that we're gonna have for this jail?
For this jail? I don't know what rates that...
I mean, what'd you pay last year, Chris? Oh, I have.
I can't.
I'm just trying to figure out how many, how many dollars total for prison. And we got 4.3 million, chances are, we've got five, maybe six.
It definitely is additional cost. I just don't know about the top.
And another one.
And as compared to the cost that Western Virginia Regional failed, Mr. Creed, you probably remember when we become, when we started to experience a problem with overcrowding in Montgomery County in 2003, and we started exploring the idea of regional jail. It got to the point where I come to the board, and I said, I can't handle it no more. My jail was rated for 60 inmates. That's what the state says I'm supposed to have. I had close to 200 of them. I then started having to search for beds everywhere in the state of Virginia to try to send inmates. And far as what we paying in Western Virginia, back then, I was paying two and three times that amount in agribusiness, in Virginia Beach, Charlotte County, anywhere I could find a bed, plus the manpower running back and forth, up and down the road to them.
Another issue you look at when you're dealing with outsourcing the inmates, you also pay whatever they charge them per diem. And if they become a problem in that jail, you can take them up.
Yep.
So they don't want their problem in their jail.
I knew it cost more, and that's the reason I was asking the question, what happens when these other jurisdictions come in and take up their space that, you know, they have bought?
We're gonna continue, I would think, probably continue to add those double bunks at the Western Regional to reach capacity, and then we'll probably be looking at the possibility of putting another pod.
Okay.
Because we are designed for another, what, two pods addition.
When we did, when we did the planning down there, everything is stubbed up to the outside walls. So when we, and they allowed us to do the core areas of the jail, like the kitchen, the recreational areas, laundry, stuff like that, twice as big as what was needed for the actual opening. That way, we can add, we can go out and add pods to increase population without affecting the daily operations of the jail.
They can just build right up to that stub out, and then cut through the doors, but then they're...
Plus, they've got over 100 inmates now that they are out, that they are contracted to feed, stuff like that. Before it becomes an overcrowding problem like that, they will start decreasing that amount.
Okay, so somewhere else.
Before it becomes a problem with overcrowding down there.
Well, that...
Pretty happy for two people in those rooms. I know, Chris.
Are you looking, Mr. Creed, or getting Mr. Tuck? I thought you were looking.
Robbie, when I first started practicing law 20 years ago, how long did it take the state to come pick up an inmate after they proceeded the sentence?
Virginia Code says that state picks up inmates. States have never picked up an inmate.
I'm just saying, but back then, 20 years ago, how long were they sitting in the local jail?
State things were served, a lot of them.
30, 60, 90 days, something along those lines. And now, is it fair to say there are people serving two- and three-year sentences down at the regional jail?
Correct. By the time, a lot of times in the past, from the time someone's incarcerated to they finally finish up their sentence in circuit court, you're looking at a year and 18 months. By the time they go from... and finally ready for trial, it's uncommon, not uncommon for it to be 12 months or a lot more.
And as you know, 12 months is local responsible, one year is state responsible. The sheriff has responsibility, the whole inmate in the jail wants to remand it to jail, whether the DFC has room for them or not. DFC has to have room and staff him before they will even take the inmate. The sheriff is ordered to take them. We have no option.
And I think, Mr. Tuck, with what you just referred to, is year after year after year, you heard DFC cutting back, cutting back, cutting back, cutting beds. And they can put a number, a cap number on each one of their facilities, they don't take anymore. But your local jails, if an arresting officer comes to the door, you take, you gotta take that inmate, and you gotta deal with that inmate. In the past, you may be able to get judges to work out deals for inmates with medical problems. Other things could be done with it. Now, with a regional jail, with a state of our medical facility, a lot of them inmates that before that they may not sentence are now coming back and getting back a minute ago with the meth problems. Me and one of the captains the other day was, was looking at some of these people, some of these people that's currently sitting in jail in Virginia courts. And we pulled up page after page of stuff that we've dealt with that person on. Larceny, shoplifting, time after time after time after time after time, a page worth. Probation, small sentence, whatever, okay? You then get them on one meth charge with a minimum mandatory sentence, they gone for three to ten years. They done, they gone, out of system.
And along the trail of us going around, we're seeing generational things now. We arrested them as young adults.
Well, now, I've got, similar, I've got several questions on this, but anyhow, on the trash that we've been getting picked up, that's been a wonderful, wonderful thing for this, for this county. Is there any chance of widening that for anything else, other than just trash pickup on roads that might help some of these get turned over a little quicker if, you know, if we got somebody that's...
Well, it depends back to funding for the officers, officers come in on their time off to do it.
Well, you know, if we're funding to the point of five plus million dollars for them to stay somewhere, if we can shorten their time off, we'll make money.
Oh, okay. I'm talking about getting a good time for time, time work, time off their sentence.
Right.
They can give, they can give a day and a half, is it day and a half still, Robbie? For trustees?
4.5. When I left the jail to come chief of death, it was four and a half, four and a half days a month. So...
And yes, we can't make them work, they have to work.
They have to work too.
And if they did, we would, and we did.
Now, I just wonder if there's other projects, that one has worked so well, and is still working well, if there's anything out there that we, that you might concede that would help along them getting out?
Well, they're trying to get credit for anything they can do with, with the paintbrush or tobacco can or water, it may be calling the floor. But then again, anytime, even though there are trustees, they're in my care. They are my responsibility, and I do have a liability associated with them. So I have to provide.
And besides working on outsides, we work on insides, so just like the rescue squads and fire departments in the county, the fund drive letters I send out each year, they usually call us and we, we stuff the envelopes for them. We get inmates and stuff envelopes for them, stuff like that. So we try, everything we can do, we try to keep it busy going.
We're innovative, we're trying to do everything that we can, the code will allow.
Well, that's the reason I'm asking a few questions, because I've had some answers, some questions, and I'm trying, I hope they're watching, because I'm getting a lot of answers as we go.
I think possibly the, I wanna call it a consignment shop, in Chauvin's old fire department, that's thrift store. That's community building, isn't it? We could probably send inmates to paint that, if it needs painting, but it would have to happen.
Now, it'd be a good time to paint it, because it's gone out of business.
Fireman?
I said, "Now would be a good time to paint it, because it's gone out of business."
Why is it going out of business?
It's a long story, I'll discuss it later.
Okay. I don't think who's painting it, if it's on the market or...
Well, no, it's not on the market, it's just gonna change some hands.
But over the years, we've tried to be innovative and do all we can. We kicking all we can out to home electronic monitoring. We, and trustees work for litter crew providers.
Now, some of the judges do not believe in home electronic monitoring, though at the same time, is that correct?
I think there's one judge that's a little bit reluctant and no control over the judge.
I understand, they wear the black dress, they get to make the rules.
The black dress.
My wife wears a black dress occasionally too, so.
Carol, you too?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Biggs.
All right, I just wanted to thank you for giving the information, because when I found out about the numbers going up, my first question was why? And Carol told me she couldn't answer that, so I want to thank you for giving the information. I think I have a better understanding now of why. Because when I first saw the numbers, I'm like, "That's not a number to be proud of." But it is in a way to be proud of, because of the law enforcement aspect of it. And I really compliment you on all you do, and, and I'm really, I'm very saddened that, that you have to deal with the meth labs, and I'm very saddened that it wrecks up people's lives like it does, because that's been a constant thing, you know, you pick up the newspaper, and you guys are always involved, and you need to be, but it's just a sad state of affairs.
I made this comment to a reporter, and always have had the opportunity to make it again, the simplest way to solve the methamphetamine problem is for them to make it a prescription drug. But I said to the veteran, "A prescription drug, and it would not be a problem, because they'd have to get a script from the doctor." However, your performances, the companies are gonna fight that too than that.
That's right.
That far more lobbying power than myself or our association work.
They sell a lot of it. I said, "They sell a lot of it."
Because it works for what it's supposed to do.
We have people that we arrest tell us that they know that Montgomery County is hard on meth labs and hard on the drug problem, and that they go into other jurisdictions.
And it is crazy.
That's a good thing. That's a real good thing.
Yeah, we move, they go all the...
I think this trend will maybe grow a little bit more than it is, but sooner or later, they gonna get the, get the hint that, you know, "If I do a crime in Montgomery County, I'm gonna spend some time."
It's our desire to try to ensure they are at least brought before court with a good case to try them.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Tommy.
Hey, I got one thing I'd like to say, you and Robbie. I've been, I've been involved in some meth busts, whatever, and I want to tell, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your whole force, they're professionals, they treat everybody with courtesy, and they do their job wonderfully. And I tell you, I'll stand up for you anytime.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And thanks to the fire department for everything they do. From the decent habitation, I don't know how we would do without you.
I appreciate everything y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Let me just note for the, I know you all know, but for the audience and for people watching, that the inmates are inmates not only that are arrested from Montgomery County, but also the town of Christiansburg, the town of Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech, because the sheriff's responsible for all of those inmates.
Thank you, Carol. Yeah, state police on there too. I guess you can throw ABC in a bunch too, right? Game orders. I need a motion to go out of work session if there's no further questions or comments.
So moved.
A motion of the second, with a clerk please called, roll.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Crewe?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Suze and Ives?
Oh, next item on our agenda is the county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do have just a couple of things for you this evening, want to remind everybody, just in case you've forgotten, that we will be presenting the budget for fiscal year 15 next Monday at 6 o'clock. So we're working diligently to get that done. I really appreciate Carol and Mark McGruder and Angie and the staff working to pull the numbers together. It's another very challenging year, and we'll be talking to you more about that next Monday. We do have a number of meetings in March, in addition to our March 10th and March 24th regular board meetings. We have a special budget work session scheduled for Monday, March 17th. We also are gonna have two community meetings to discuss the budget. The dates that we were able to confirm with everybody were March 25th and April 8th. We're still working on venues for those two meetings, but as soon as we have that nailed down, we'll make you aware of those. But if you want to go ahead and pencil in, March 25th and April 8th, I believe they're both Tuesday nights, we have meetings set up for those. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, and I see Lisa's sitting in the back of the room, we had a group that attended, I'm gonna pass that down there. This is a news release that we sent out, we had a group that attended the Appalachian Gateway Communities Workshop. It was a workshop to develop economic competitiveness by capitalizing on the area's natural and cultural assets. And we put together a team to attend this meeting. It included Catherine Herndon from the Appalachian Trail Conservancy, Ruth Walks, who's the director of the Moss AR, Center at Tech, Barry Helms, who represented the Tourism Operating Board, Elijah Sharp from the NRVPDC, Sharon Scott from the Chamber, Steve Hubbard, who is the Christiansburg representative on the Montgomery Tourism Development Council, and Lisa attended as well. And that was a couple of days, I guess that was week before last now, wasn't it, that the group went, brought back a wealth of information, and we look forward to utilizing that as we develop and further our tourism efforts in the months ahead. But appreciate Lisa coordinating that as well. Lisa's here if you have any questions on that, but otherwise, I'll wrap up my report.
Okay. Member's report, supervisor Tuck.
Couple of things. One, I'd like to just talk about whether, I'm thinking about, obviously, a lot of fire and rescue here in the last few weeks. And one of the things I was thinking that we don't do is that we don't recognize the firefighter's of the year and rescue squad members of the year that I'm aware of as the board in a formal recognition. Now, that may or may not be a great idea. I'd like to talk about that, and people like Todd and yourself, Bill, who's got a lot of experience with the fire and rescue. But the other thing I would like to think about doing is, what if we did a countywide firefighter volunteer of the year and rescue younger of the year? And recognize those folks as well, and for us to go through, working with Neil, to come up with one to recognize each and every year, just the commitment that they make. We've got one of our own who's a volunteer, and was the most calls out in Ryan for the fire department. But it's something that, when looking at all the numbers and what they give back to the community, I would like for us to look at some ways to recognize them more, so.
Most of the dinners, awards, and installation of new officers, and usually around Christmas or sometime, they have a dinner. And during that dinner, the new officers are sworn in, the squadsmen of the year, whatever awards they give out, or normally recognize at that, at that dinner of the each individual squads. But I know what you are asking...
Is to bring those folks, but I don't want them to have to come to a meeting for a meeting's sake, but I'd just like to think about maybe some way of recognizing, or maybe we just pick two out of all those members of the year and say, "Hey, you're the, you're the rescue squad member of the year for the whole county. You're the fire department volunteer member for the whole county." That may cause problems. And so that's why I'm saying, let's talk about it, that may not be the best idea in the world, but it's something that I would like us to consider.
If we went down that route, I would strongly recommend, there are five volunteer fire departments in this county, there's five rescue squads in this county, that we would recognize one from each fire department and one from each rescue squad. There would be 10 people, instead of just doing, like, one from Blacksburg, and maybe one from Ryan, and then the other people filling a little bit.
That's what I'm saying, we could either do, bring them in and pass resolutions, or give them something from our board, saying, "Hey, listen, Bill, Todd, you're the member of the year, here we, here we go, and here's a certificate." That's one way of doing, the other way was doing, I'm open to suggestions, I'm not tied into any of them. And that's why I was saying that the two of you have actually been involved a lot more than I have. But it was just something that I came up with, and that will be my report, something for us to talk with repeal and...
Yeah, before we should move on, anybody have any other thoughts that'd like to throw in on that topic?
I would want to do it unless it was more than just one, I think. I think you're looking for a little bit of conflict there with such, you know, they're all very proud of what they do.
Absolutely.
And they should be very proud of what they do, because they do a great job. So I don't, you know, to single them out, not knowing, not being there, and we just taking somebody's word for it, one from one place being better than the other four from the other four places, I don't know how that would work, and that might get a little tedious.
I would just support what Mr. Brown said, I think it's always better to, to go to where, you know, you have your, your folks and ask there. It's always better from here up than here down. You know what I mean? As having experienced it both ways, I think that you need to really find out, you know, how people feel about that kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
There is another venue, I participate in a group that's called Leading Lights. And they, the Leading Lights represents volunteers in the community every year. And they pick several, just general, and a high school student and a middle school student, or tech student too. Anybody can nominate volunteers to receive awards with this group. It's, it started, it was started by the German club at Tech, because it was a response, they wanted in some way to respond to the April event at Tech that took so many lives. And so the committee is made up of people from all over New River Valley, it's people from Pulaski, Giles, Floyd, Montgomery County, the towns that are in there. So it's a whole new river situation. And it seems to me that what we ought to do is encourage recognition of the firefighters and the rescue squad people, even through that organization, and individual units could do that, but, and then we end up choosing about five volunteers, and this is a committee thing made up of people from a lot of different places, but that does the final choice, you know, we wouldn't be a part of it. But it would give another venue for recognition of these volunteers. And I think it's, I think it's exceedingly important that we say thank you. I recently had to have use of the Blacksburg Volunteers Rescue Squad, and this was the middle of the day. I recently had to have use of the Blacksburg Volunteers Rescue Squad. And this was the middle of the day at 11:30. And we had people there who came and I cannot say enough for those people. They were absolutely professional from the word go, compassionate, considerate. And to think that everyone, each one of those individuals that came were volunteers in the middle of the day and they got there at a record speed. So I am thinking that somehow or other, it would be very wise for us to mention that to all these rescue squads and firefighter squads because it would give them genuine recognition.
What I was implying, that the nomination would come from the squad. We wouldn't figure out they would take the squad to push that person forward.
See, and this way it would, because we could make known to all the squads, if they wanted to participate, they could. If they don't want to participate, they don't have to. But I'm not sure how many of them really know about the Leading Lights program.
After I wrote the article that was published, Mr. Arnold, who was the chair of the NRV Leading Lights, and I have, and actually, there's a volunteer I have in mind who I witnessed and dealt with, that I think I will be nominating for that. So I know the program that you're talking about, but I felt as a board, and this is a great program, I thought maybe as a board that we might want to look at doing something. And we may decide that there's not anything that we want to do. Each individual squad is always doing something. There's awards at every dinner that I've gone to. But I was just thinking of a way that we could recognize the volunteers as a board. How we do that, that's why I was looking to folks with some more expertise than I have about the best way to do that. But I'm aware of the Leading Lights program.
Yeah. Well, even after the people are chosen, well, sometimes there are as many as 30 volunteers chosen and invited to this banquet. And there is publicity in the newspapers once it's done. That's within itself, if the squads, you know, had someone, they may not win one of the five awards, but at the same time, they would be in the newspapers and they would get some recognition publicly for that. If we supported that Leading Lights program or anything else, it would be very helpful and those individuals could then come here and be recognized. But again, it would have to be from the ground up.
Mr. Creed.
One thing I'd like to suggest, and been in it for a little while, Mr. Brown has too, if you go by a fire or rescue station, just stop by. And just let them know, you know, just go in and say, aye. Or if they're having an award ceremony and that you're invited, make every effort to go. That would mean a lot to them. It really would.
Thank you.
It really would.
You ready to go to report?
Yes. I got one thing I'd like to bring up. The board, I think, was last year bought fire in Montgomery County, a universal gold foam. We had a three-day class on that. It's for, like, E-85 fuel. And I didn't realize how dangerous that E-85 fuel was until Saturday. That's dangerous stuff. And I just wanted to tell you, the whole, Montgomery County is a whole fire department day, there was people there from every department, Blacksburg, Ryanair, Alliston, everywhere. And we got together and we had, like I said, a three-day class. And Saturday, the instructor put out a 275 gallon tank cut in half and poured five gallons of E-85 fuel in it. And we sprayed some of that universal gold foam on it, except for probably about a foot on the edge. And that's where the fuel was burning. We have to cover it back up. And we sat there and we talked for a little while. And he said, is that getting fires out? So he took a flare, well, not a flare, but a stick, and went down there and it flamed back up. I just want to tell y'all, as a fire department member, I appreciate what y'all have done on that because that will save a lot of lives. It really will.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it? Okay, Mr. Creed.
I've got one thing that, actually, I talked with Mr. Meadows on this back during the week, and I just want to make sure that board members know kind of what's going on here. And Stark was saying that we may have given the school board more money than they need for doing removal of buildings and stuff around. Because they don't seem to have enough money to, or they have more money than it takes to do a lot of things, so they start looking for other things to tear down. And I say this because, as we all, I'll just read what I wrote down here. As we all know, the school board, boards have been going to tear down the old elementary school in Shawville for the last two or three years. Said they'd do it just soon as they got money. That's well in fact. It needed to be tore down or it needs to be tore down. But unbeknownst to anyone else, it was kind of leaked to me that not only were they going to tear the school down, but they were going to tear it down on July the 1st, starting on July the 1st. And they weren't subject or agreeable to any other date, even knowing that the Shawville Wilting Club has used that for over 30 years to a free thing for all, anybody that wanted to come from anywhere in the county with fireworks that nobody will come close to beating. And they, in their wise wisdom, was going to, or I guess they're still going to do it at some time or another, go take the bleachers down where everybody sits for our Little League football, it's played on the football field there. Got a baseball field that goes over the hill there that some of the parks and wrecked have used to do baseball, and they said they were going to level that out some to the bank. I don't know to what extent they were planning on doing that. But why do you want to tear down bleachers and the tower where you're now sat up and the concession stand, which is a separate building that was built by people other than the school, back many, many years ago? I don't know whether they're thinking about the lights or not, tearing them down, but if y'all will remember back several years ago, back when Elton Simpkins was the principal at that school, that was the high school. It got to be about three weeks, four weeks before football season. And he called me and asked me if I had any way of coming up with any money, had anybody I could call on to help out with the lights. I told him to give me two days and I'd have him some money. Well, two days later, I had enough money to finish all the lights or buy them all. And we had somebody from the, I'm pretty sure that, I think Roger Smith was the one there, but I better not say that because I'm not 100% sure. But everything there was done. And then for them, just for them to come along and just throw it in your face that, hey, we're going to tear this down, we don't care if you ever come down here and have another thing for the citizens down on this end of the county, we're going to tear it down. That is not good. And when it comes to, they were asked, one of them asked if we could use the old, the new high school. Well, you could use the new high school if you didn't want to go anywhere. You could just have them pull in, not have a parade, not have any fireworks because fireworks are true with the, you have to have all your Ts crossed and Is dotted in order to get a permit to put off fireworks. And let me tell you, and it's for one spot, it's on the hill right across, away from everything where it's at. There's no need for any section of this county to have to go through all of that in order to help people in the county. I mean, that is just uncalled for. It's something that I hope they somehow realize that they don't need to do all of that, they need to go ahead and tear the building down that they was going to tear down and leave everything else alone because it's all being utilized. Every square inch of it is being used, other than where the school's at. You've got a middle school there. If they want to have anything on the field, if they have a junior varsity or an eighth grade team or whatever it may be, I don't, I guess the eighth grade team would be what they would have there. If they want to have that, that is their field. That is their bleachers. But they're going to fix it to where they don't have bleachers for, maybe they're expecting us to give them the money to put up new ones. I don't know. But there's nothing wrong with the ones there. It just seems to me that they're got money and they're trying to find a place to spend it where they can say, well, we got this done, this done, this done, and all these other little things done. And as I told, I'm not real proud of it, but as I told Craig when I called him, I was peeved off and I was angry. And that is the truth. And I'm still angry that anybody could start something like that and make it hard on the citizens of the county and the kids of the county when we already have enough. It's, you know, they talk about old buildings. Our middle school's a building that's 60, 70 years old. It's the oldest building in the county.
Question. Have you contacted your school board representative to share that with them?
No, I talked to Craig and he found, he walked out his door and found somebody that knew something about it.
Supervisor Creed's timing was really good that day because he called me and I hung up and walked out the door and ran into Dan Barinato. But Dan, as Supervisor Creed said, has said that nothing is cast in stone yet, but they're getting estimates and putting a timetable together. And so I shared with Supervisor Creed, as I will with the rest of the board, as that information comes in, I'll make sure you're aware of it. Because I did send an email to Dr. Staton as well and ask him to keep us in the loop on what the plans are down there.
Supervisor Perkins.
No report.
Okay. Supervisor Biggs.
I just want to tell you all that there's going to be on Friday, March 7th, at 7 o'clock at the Christiansburg Library, a reception to honor Marianne Hinchelwood. It's going to be from the Montgomery County, well, the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Foundation and the Montgomery Museum. As you know, she's just been such a vital volunteer in our community and she's going to be moving away to Abington. We're going to lose her and so they're just wanting to honor her. So if you all can come, it's at 7 o'clock at the Christiansburg Library.
When?
March 7th. And then the only other thing I have to ask, and I don't know if this is even the proper place to ask it or not, but it really disturbed me when I picked up the newspaper and read about all the pollution from the Arsenal into the New River and the air pollution and being known as the most polluted thing and all. Since we, you know, sort of responsible for public safety and health of our citizens, do we ask any questions about that or do we, as a board, need to know about that? Or, I'm just not sure where to go with it, but when I read it, it didn't really sit well with me. Do we do anything about that or is it just something that just continues to go on and we just know it goes on or what do we do?
That issue is monitored and dealt with by the federal government, by the EPA. I mean, we, I believe we get periodic notifications on that, but that's a federal issue. We don't.
So when we get our water from the New River or when other localities get their water from the New River and this pollution goes in there, how is that?
Our water intake is.
Oh, I know our water intake, but what about others? I mean, I almost, almost brought it up when Chuck was here. I just, I don't know. It just sort of disturbed me when I read that.
There's, and I don't know whether it's the same, it's been 40-some years since I've worked over there and I worked in the water department. And a part of that was sending the reports to the federal government. They used to catch samples out of Stube's Creek, samples above the river, samples within the plant, and samples at the end when it left the plant. And all of those went to the lab and those reports had to be sent to the federal government that you are doing this. And then every now and then, they would come and make spot checks to make sure that the river didn't contain more than what was allowed there. Now, that's been 40-some years ago and I don't know what they're doing now, but I'm sure that the EPA will get right on them if they're not doing right.
Okay.
Because, and I think that's an issue that's beyond this county. Okay, what else?
That's it?
What's left up to me, and the only thing I got for my report is that it's time for us to adjourn.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned.